I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong, and always. And I'll ask you to join us. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Knight States of America, and to the Republic for which stands our nation, America, universal, liberty, and justice for all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address any item not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. You have three minutes, please state your name and address.
Hello again, this is Mary Ann Albert Fuchain, 93th Mall, Pleasant Avenue, advocate for small and medium-sized schools. I wish I could make, put this up on the screen, but this is the circle in front of East Gloucester Elementary School. Can I show it to all of you? I've seen it before.
We've seen it, listen, just showed it off.
Okay.
I was going to recognize it.
I've waited all summer, all summer, to see if anybody would come and help take care of that. No, it's not the school committee's problem, it's the DPWs, but I feel that we're letting it all fall apart now. The wall in front of East Gloucester Elementary School, cracked out about this big, it's now 30 feet long, danger to the children. Why is the schools committee asking for it to be fixed? I'm almost running out of things to say at this point, but I have to bring this up because I thought about it at every single meeting. My father owns Rogers Package Store, which is now a Pier 20 school kitchen. He built that in 1952. When I was in sixth grade, that store was robbed at gunpoint. The gentleman that robbed that store held my father, another employee, and two patrons at gunpoint with sawed-off shotguns. They continued, they got away, please recall, they got to Danvers where they hit a car and killed a male. The point I'm trying to make is, they said in that courtroom that it was easy access for them. We put the school on Green Street, it is easy access for any intruder, anyone. 440, all on the same building, easy access to the high end. I cannot get that thought out of my mind. I'll say it again, I said it before, big mistake, taking our children out of the neighborhoods when they're much safer with the people that know them and take care of them.
Hi, this is Fieldhead Pilots Hill. I was just going to ask if you could get the light fixed so when we go out, it's beautiful.
I hope we can. We've been asked to defer.
Come in the winter.
Oh my God, I'm kind of afraid to fall now, I can't imagine.
We will put, we will, this building is not owned, it's part of the state, it's not, it's maintained by the landlord and we, we will do it again.
And I just have one other question. When you did the O'Malleye High School re-fortification for safety, did that go up to give?
It's in the design process.
Oh, you mean then it goes up to here?
Yeah, they've got to have plans for somebody to say, figure out how much design process.
Because every meeting I go to, it's like we're spending $4 million, $3 million, $2 million last night at the city council. I'm just embarrassed about the money, I think we need to be more vigilant.
I tried to.
Oh, good, it's welcome, no.
Safety is important.
I agree with that 100,000 percent.
I'm in Green Street. I'm opposed to the Green Street project. I'm for smaller community schools. You know, I just think it's detrimental to that area. It is the last green space, I bet you guys have heard it a million times. And, you know, I, above Green Street Park once, so I see the activity of children playing daily over those fields, and I saw the design by your company, and, you know, the layout pretty much takes all of that field. And to me, it's just, it's so sad to see. You know, keep those small community schools, you know, I've been doing some research and I saw someone post something about it, how combined schools, they see a decline in test scores. I mean, I don't know who on the panel looks into that stuff. I mean, there's a lot of research that's been done about it, and it showed that there was a decline in scores, like Mathewan was one of the schools, Lawrence, Randolph, they had smaller community, small schools, neighborhood schools, and when they combined schools, testing scores went down amongst the students. So, you know, I'd really be interested in who has done any research on that to see, you know, the pros and cons of that. One of the other things I'd like to bring up is, you know, the city is going to be spending upwards of $40 million plus out of pocket on taxpayers. And also coming up is the potential for the SUA station on Essex Ave. And that project alone is, right now, their estimated cost between $80 and $140 million for that project. So now, all of a sudden, the taxpayer is going to take on $40 million for schools, and then we're going to be, how much are we going to hit for that? And that's another question that should be brought up amongst everybody. And I know there's not a huge turnout here, and I hope that goes in front of the citizens of Gloucester, because people need to know that stuff, what they're looking at within the next two to three years with the SUA, with the station being re-filled. So, that's it for me, but I hope you guys can say, you know, keep Green Street a green space.
Hi, my name is Tracy O'Neil, I live in 12 Friend Street. I am opposed to the Green Street project. And I know you all care about our children and their education, but I'm asking you to really think about the big picture, okay? At a time when the polar ice caps are disappearing, they're not just melting, they've had a funeral in Norway, they put a plaque on a rock that used to be a glacier. And the tropical rainforests are burning, and they represent 20 percent of the world's production of oxygen. So not only are we losing our oxygen supply by these fires, the fire is actually sucking the oxygen out, so it's, it's a double whammy. So for us to cut down any forests is, in my mind, not only irresponsible, but reckless. And I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I think the time of niceties is pretty much over. I really think, I know you're thinking of the education, but there's not going to be air to breathe, or water to drink, or anywhere to play, or grow, or learn, if we don't keep our trees to supply us with oxygen and to absorb the water that comes from marine. I know you all care about the children and their education, but I'm thinking about their lives. So, thank you. And I really hope you really think about this, because it's a scary time. Thanks for listening, and I hope you really do listen and think about it.
Who would recognize us?
So, before Mary got up, I told the committee, showed the committee pictures of what you did to East Gloucester, so I wanted to recognize you and your family for what you did donating your time and whatever products to make in that school, the middle, the churn in the middle of the school looked great. And at the same time, generous gardeners for what they've done at O'Malleye. It seems like the community is really coming out to beautify our schools, and people like Mary Ann and organizations like The Growers deserve recognition, and I just wanted to make sure that we were thoughtful of that, because both those areas are gorgeous.
Thank you, but I just want you all to know that that's not something that we just did because of this. This is something that we do.
Every year.
Every year.
I know.
It's a way to honor Lieutenant Arthur Maxwell Carson's family for donating that land. It's a way for, to teach our children and grandchildren that these spaces are extremely important. It's a valuable lesson for our kids, and it's something that my parents insisted on when I was a child, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to also call home on this, I know the PTOs have done an awful lot, including when I was at East Gloucester, we took care of that circle and planted it, and unfortunately things don't continue to grow, but it's nice to see things looking nice. I know the Lowe family at the middle school has one area that they planted trees and they keep it looking absolutely spectacular. So, my key recognition is to the Department of Public Works in the city for their project at Reinhardt Street and the sidewalks that lead up to O'Malleye as part of the safety, safe school, safe path to school. And I know, I think we had that meeting maybe three years ago, but it just shows that sometimes you have to lay the groundwork, apply for the grants, get it in the queue in terms of planning on the DPWs part, so that that work can start and finish over the course of the summer. So, there's a lot going on there, which is all very good.
And we had come down to kindergarten last week, and I, we had a building committee meeting, so I didn't make it, but I heard it was very successful, with a big turnout. There are a number of organizations that contribute to that, including the city and the school department, as well as the Education Foundation, the IMCA, and the door, and I don't know if I've named them all, because I wasn't there. That's my excuse anyways, but it's a great program, and we could walk away with a backpack, and they get to sit on a bus, and they get to, there's a play, and it's a good, good thing. Anything else? Okay, too early for student advisory council, so who wants consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for a discussion? I would like to remove the $350 contribution from, just so I want to talk about it.
I don't believe we approve the consent agenda. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would just like to, once again, point out that the Natty family, in memory of Robert Nattery, Natty, who was a guidance counselor at Gloucester High School when I was there, and later on he was a principal, and spent his whole life in the Gloucester school system, has very faithfully donated $350 every year since I've been on the school committee and probably before that, so we're talking 24 years or something. And they just do it every year, and I think, and the money gets given to the elementary libraries each, on a rotating basis, and they use the libel books for the library, and they do it every year, if they're influencing. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this prayer.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's meaningless. Next item of business is, we have an issue of oversubscription to middle school field hockey, and our athletic director, Brian McLeod, received to explain his solution, which he would like our approval.
Thank you for letting me come in here quickly to discuss this, what is a good problem for us. We obviously, we run an O'Malleye field hockey program, and we're at twice the amount we usually have capacity, typical field hockey team. Ideally, we'd be 20, which is student athletes on the team for a field advantage and playing time. We are at 40 right now, but usually when school starts, we get a few more as well. So the issue is, we obviously don't want to turn student athletes away, they have cuts and push them aside, especially the field hockey sort of sport, like little league baseball, or new basketball, where there's other options in town to play. So I've come up with an idea that we still have a team that competes against all the other schools, a 14-game schedule. They'll have a mini-trial once school starts, but then for the students, most of the younger ones, the more inexperienced, will be on what we call more of a developmental team, and they practice two to three times a week with the other team of the 18 players, we could call it. So they're getting instruction, development, they do that throughout the entire season, and it keeps them in the game. So I don't want to push them away, give them an activity after school, and hopefully be able to grow that program. The one issue I feel we would run into, obviously, is the kids that are on the top level team playing 14 games, paying the same amount as the kids that might make the developmental team that really aren't playing games and are just playing after. So my thought would be for the kids that don't make the top level, that they will all pay the free lunch rate, which is, at that level, is $25, to basically take part in the developmental program if they didn't make the top level team. So, that was my one issue I felt would come up if kids didn't make that top level, paying the same rate that the others are paying. So, it's my proposal for that.
Any questions?
This was brought up to us at our last meeting, so we'd ask to have you come here just to get some back and forth with you. So, the kids that are on the team that aren't playing are the teams. Are we the only city or town that's not going to have our younger, less experienced kids competing against other school districts?
No.
It sounds like.
Most of the other team, they have one, most of the other schools have one team.
Yes.
A lot of them are seventh and eighth graders, and they don't even, those kids don't even participate, they almost have to wait another year. And I would prefer, obviously, there's such a high interest level right now, they have a great summer camp, the high school program, that has really boosted involvement, that these people are signing up, I'd like to do something to keep them involved. But yeah, as far as the other towns, most of their sixth graders, I would assume, are not people playing at this point, they have to wait to kind of make the teams.
So I'm wondering, because you're a pretty dynamic person, bringing people together, that's why you're where you are today, because we heard you in your interviews. I'm wondering if you'll have this capability of maybe reaching out to other towns or cities in the area, like I know Rockport has an issue with their group being small.
Yep.
And maybe arranging some unofficial games, just to get kids interacting with kids outside the district, if this is going to go forward like this.
Yeah, that definitely could be a possibility, and then if we do that, then we start looking at, the change of rate might be different, because then we factor in the bus trip, the officials, and those type of things, so this would obviously be a moot point. I don't know if we would be able to fill as many games as a regular schedule, say 14 games, but I might be able to find two to four schools more locally, maybe the Manchester Essex, they usually have the numbers that we could try and do something like that.
Because I can't help but wonder if parents would be more willing to pay a little bit more money, the regular fee, knowing they're getting all the developmental skills, but at the same time having a few games against other, because that's the camaraderie, and that's where it makes it fun and makes kids come back, so that's just a thought that I would hope could happen.
Definitely, and potentially, I mean, obviously, the developmental team would be more younger, less experienced, so lots of schools sometimes look for additional games, but I wouldn't want to put them against the regular middle school teams. Like I said, some of them definitely play extra games, but I would put them in a situation unfair competitively.
But this might have other kids in other schools that aren't getting a chance to play, give them an opportunity to play.
Yep.
So it might work out.
I could definitely do something like that, reach out to some of the other agencies and see what they do with those younger individuals.
Thank you.
Two questions. So the students who are already on the free lunch rate, they don't see any discount, if they otherwise would never be receiving, she is a developmental student, they're at the same rate, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, second question is, how recently did we start including sixth graders on this? I thought, I remember being a seventh and eighth grade team also, do you know when it became?
I honestly don't, I've always been kind of told it was a no-cut sport, and that's why they had that many. Last year, we did have a middle-level waiver where eighth graders could play on high school team. We didn't get that for girls soccer, we did have that seventh and eighth grade to help do that. We did find that sometimes we run into the problem of doing that, when you have a middle school sport, like field hockey or basketball cross-country, asking some of those eighth graders to move up to high school, when they can still play with their middle school, you run into that problem.
I guess what I'm getting at is if typical towns, sixth graders don't play anyway, and we historically have thought didn't have sixth graders playing in the first place. I'm curious how long sixth grade has been allowed to participate in the team, and if it's not been that long, does this fix your problem to go back to, this is a seventh and eighth grade sport, and sixth grade is the developmental year, instead of a tryout situation? So it's typically, no one else is sixth grader except for us, very few people except for us are sixth graders, and those who do have sixth graders for number purposes, not for inclusion purposes, so we have enough seventh and eighth graders, that's the team, sixth grade is the developmental, will that fix your problem without having this tryout situation?
Yep, no, exactly, and that's, I haven't had the exact talks, because I haven't got a definite decision with the coaches, but that would be one of the things that I would lean toward, would be all sixth graders would be on that anyways, but there's still, just seventh and eighth graders is well over 20, so we're still going to have to make a decision on some of those kids and what they do, because it would put the coaches very tough, predicament with some of that. So, but my, my idea would be, that we're sixth graders on our first year of developmental, you've got a couple of years to play after this, and make sure they get the right instruction. So I agree.
So just to be clear, what you're asking is, for a waiver of the full fee, reduce it to a $25 fee for students at O'Malleye School that play field hockey that don't make the, a better word than trial.
Yep, competitive, you've got to play some type of competition.
Is that clear, does everybody understand what we're?
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'm going to make that one soon.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
My recall when I first came on the committee was, the sixth graders did not like, because they had too many participants already at seventh and eighth grade, so now the sixth graders have been more recent. And I do know there's been years when it's really been a lot of kids, and tough for the coaches to do exactly what you said, give them all the experience, it means a nice compliment, so that.
Yep.
Have the option.
The last thing I want to do is, obviously, is just say, no, you can't play, we don't have anything for you, even for some families, it might be a babysitting service, but for the majority of kids, they want to be there and learn the game, and we've got somebody that wants to coach it, teach it, because they would take advantage of it.
I'm sorry I didn't ask, are there any other offerings, the fall sports?
Fall sports for them, but there is cross-country for middle school, so they could choose to do cross-country. There's no, you know, for fall sports, that's all we have for O'Malleye, those two. Obviously, if seventh and eighth graders, we have, not eighth graders, we should have the waiver that they can play girls soccer, but as far as sixth graders, there's no other options besides cross-country.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Brian.
Good luck, Brian.
And we're going to move on to our update on the East Gloucester project. We have with us tonight, Michelle Rogers and Brad Dorr from Dorr &amp; Widdier, and Tom Ellis from CBRE Theory, our own project manager. We have submitted the preliminary design program, which is, looks like this. This is what was submitted. This is also available, it's posted, it's on the website, you can read it. If you choose to, if you want my suggestions or highlights, I would look at the educational program, because that is the key to the decision, many of the decisions that we have made, and will have to make in the future. Now that this has been submitted, we are on a new timeline, which will get explained, I believe, but basically, we're looking to, as most of you know, who have been to many of these meetings, the phrase is, this week, we're looking at this option because MSB makes us do it. Okay, so we are now in the position that we need to start cutting from nine down to two or three, and then from two or three down to one. And that's, will all happen within the next couple of months. So, and Michelle, bring us up to date.
Hi, my wife is home tonight, just not glad. Good evening. So as Jonathan said, we're going to give you a project update, we're going to talk about our next steps, and then we'll review the schedule. And so our process to date has been to work on feasibility schedules, peaceful capabilities. And those of you who have followed this process, remember that it's two-part process, one is the preliminary design program, AKA the PUP, which is the binder that Jonathan has been talking. And we're now starting our second phase, which is the preferred schematic report. We'll then go into actual schematic design, and then go forward with approvals as we move down the schedule. So the preliminary design program included our review of the educational program, Jonathan has said, you know, take a look at within the binder. From that, we developed a space summary, which gave us the overall area of the building. We analyzed existing building conditions and capital improvements. We looked at the ability of the existing buildings to meet those educational programs in the space summary, and then we developed options, two designer enrollments and three sites, and we came up with 14 different options. We then analyzed those options, pared those down, and got to nine, which we then submitted as options for further study in the PSR. All of that information is available to you on the website, which is located here. You can view this site again, and that entire binder you will find within this here. Moving forward is the preferred schematic report, and that's the goal that we have to get to, from nine to three to two to one. And we're going to be doing this over the course of the next few months. We have several meetings lined up, almost weekly, with working group and the school building committee, and by October 23rd, we present our recommendation to the MSBA. So just to remind you of what those options were, we had two options, which were capital improvements only, or renovations to the existing buildings. These are required as baseline by the MSBA, to see if your existing building could meet the educational program that you have, what the conditions of the building are existing, what renovations might look like. What you see on the left-hand side is your existing building and how it works to meet the space summary, where red are spaces that cannot meet the road to your space summary. And we moved to the A2 summary, and that is renovations, where we actually add some of those missing spaces, but we don't quite need the program at all, we still miss a gym. We go from 75 percent of our missing administration area to about 50 percent missing. We actually add some of your special education spaces, but you can see here, there's still a lot of red dots on that space, on that diaphragm. So, in our evaluation criteria, which you can see within the book, we scored all of these options, and these two options scored about 39 out of 100 points, and their costs were between $18 and $30 million for capital improvements or renovations of the existing building. And again, to remind everybody, this would be a single school solution, so this would only be money for this Gloucester school, and you have the money and the options, but not include veterans and morons. We then looked at additions and renovations for 230 students, as well as addition renovations for 440. This is where we get to renovate a building, plus add on to the building, and we looked at the site and the ability of the site to handle both the addition of the building, as well as the addition of the students. In these options, your C1, your B1 for 230 students is also a single school solution, does not include veterans and morons of those students. And what we came to was that the C1 option for 440 students is really too large for both the site and the new building. So the impact of having that building on that site is really drastic. These two options scored 60 to 65 out of 100, and their cost was about $54 to $78 million.
$54 to $78 million. Fifty-four to seventy-eight million.
Is the fifty-four for the single school solution, the seventy-eight?
Then we moved on to look at new buildings on this existing site. So the new buildings on the East Cluster site. So again, two, two designer enrollments, one for two hundred and thirty students and one for four hundred and forty. Our conclusion again for four hundred and forty students is that this is too much of an impact for this particular site, and there's the other. Can't resolve any parking needs, we have a lot of stormwater management issues that are hard to resolve for the size of this building on this site. The, these two options scored between sixty-eight and seventy-two out of a hundred, and their cost was fifty-one to sixty-seven million. So if you remember what I just told you about the cost of addition or renovation, these two, these options would actually cost less than additional renovation of the existing building. And we find that that's not all that unusual. The cost of renovating buildings is pretty expensive. Finally, we moved on to two other sites. These were both new options. In this case, we explored only a four hundred and forty student solution. We looked at the veterans and morons school site for four hundred and forty students. That building would resolve your two-school solution. It would, the solution here includes the demolition of East Cluster School, as well as the veterans and morons school. Includes relocation of the ball field as well. The G1, which is the schoolhouse road site, that also includes the demolition of the East Cluster School, as well as the veterans and morons school. These options scored our highest. They were eighty-seven to ninety-one, so the range of the scoring for these two options actually scored considerably higher than the other options that we looked at, and their cost estimate was between sixty-four and sixty-nine million dollars.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the cost, and it might go to the last meeting, but you don't have to go back to it. So when you say the estimated cost, when you did the cost of these two, did you take into consideration demolition to the East Cluster School? Because I know there was talk about having that done.
Yes.
So that figure includes in these two?
Both these options include demolition to both.
Demolition to both schools. It's what?
Bullet and a three.
Well, you know what, I can't see it. I should have this right in front of me, on a printed paper, but I don't, so.
So the, the relocation of the ball field, is that like a relocation of a ball field elsewhere on the site? Or like to the East Cluster site, or to where the?
It would not fit on this site, so it's somewhere else.
Okay.
So what we did was we, the cost of relocating a ball field with lights and a badass, what that would cost typically to relocate some places.
Sure.
And, you know, depending on where you put it, would actually adjust that cost. So our next steps are to complete our evaluation of existing buildings. So that would be site surveys, geotechnical exploration of the area where the buildings are going. So now that we sort of have an idea of where we're going to put these buildings, that's where we're gonna use our money to go and explore those specific areas. Which is gonna set the, putting holes where we don't need to look. We're gonna identify any wetlands permitting requirements, and that is mostly around traffic and parking, and then a traffic study for the sites. We're gonna work with the building committee to assess all the options, present our recommendations, and then develop our submittal to the MSBA, which will look a little slightly different than this one here, but certainly an extensive amount of information. So the schedule that we're on is to present our preferred schematic report to the MSBA on October twenty-third. And we'll then go to a facilities assessment board meeting. Either on November thirteenth or the twentieth, the MSBA gets to decide when to meet with them. And then we go to their board meeting on December eleventh, and then that would give us approval to move into schematic design.
Joel, one more question regarding the, the cost estimations. So my understanding is that if it's a schoolhouse road site, students just remain in their existing buildings until that one's open. Obviously, if it's the veterans' site, you have two hundred and something kids displaced for a few school years. Has the cost of putting them somewhere, back into?
An estimated cost of relocating students has been included.
Okay.
Excuse me, but if you want to have conversations, you can go outside and have them, please.
We can't here, I mean, I know you're talking.
We're trying, we're receiving a report here.
Um, has the, what point in this timeline does the logistics of where they would go come into this?
So as, as we begin to move forward, once you choose if it's schoolhouse road, there is no need to further explore that. If it is veterans moving on the site, or East Cluster site, we then have to go and explore a location for those students. And so once you make your decision about which option you're going with, then you start moving forward into deciding where you want to put students, or if relocating students is even necessary.
So from my point of view, maybe this just isn't possible with the process that we're in. But I think I would want to know what our plan is, you know, so we're not in a situation, we almost found ourselves in this building. So we're not in a situation you find yourselves in when, originally West Parish was, oh, we have a surplus fully up, so we're on there. Oh wait, we can't send them through, and they ended up at St. Anne's, and that happened to, to work out. It was, it was a pinch to put light in, right? And so that would be a consideration, at least for me, I would hope to know, okay, if there is a, a relocation component, we know what that's gonna look like, we aren't gonna, I hate to commit to the vet site and then find out, oh no, we have nowhere for two, we're putting fifty kids in our four other schools, and it's a, you know, a circus room.
Well, if you want to use the West Parish as a benchmark, we, we went through a similar process where once we understood that there was no other place to put students except on that existing site, we began the process of looking, and we looked all over the city, and it looked at many, many different options. And we go through that same process here, where you would look at all your options and then weigh your costs and disruption to students. But if it's, you're gonna have to make a decision after you make a decision though, whether, which option you're choosing.
So I guess, if that's the process, the process. For me, that seems a little backward. I'd want to know the full ramifications of everything, you know, what, what happens? Only because we got, you know, if the arches, if this isn't around this time to bail us out. I remember the other options was a factory and Conlon and Rome was looked at, but that's actually occupied right now. So that's not, that's off the table. I know there are abandoned buildings that have come up that would be appropriate for a school for two or three years. So that, to me, just seems very important. If the vet site is, is good, but we don't have some sort of guarantee that it's not gonna be terrible for these kids when they have to leave that site, or terrible for the whole district because we're jamming them to our existing buildings, that would be a big break for me if they're otherwise, you know, comical sites. We're taking, we're just hoping, right?
When is it typical, I know the West Parish took two years, two school years, for the kids to be relocated. Is that more typical than not, that it's a two-year construction, so not three?
Sure.
Yeah. And again, you know, once we knew where we were moving to for West Parish, we began to do renovations that were needed to the day one, that they were ready to extend to their building.
To up one, I think it's time we, at least get some feelers up to the arches.
I have another question, and I apologize to Tony in advance, but it was a vote from the board.
Was your party to have?
If the veteran's site is chosen, with all the discussion in the community about metal steel, was, has a plan been discussed amongst the building committee to relocate the field? If that's what needs to be done, at no expense to the?
Cost money for somebody.
Well, I mean, no expense to anybody who wants to have what they have now. In other words, it was a lot of fundraising to get the lights. So there won't be any more fundraising to get lights if we don't feel.
The funding is, is included.
Even if the lights don't work?
Right.
Same lights?
I mean, the same lights can't. You can't move the same lights because they're on poles.
I don't know.
You're gonna have to go get new lights.
Okay.
That's included. New lights are included.
And a place to sit, just like sitting out where it's probably better than what they have, or, but the same. Thank you.
You'll, you'll demand to use the empty field.
I don't think you people understand what that is.
Thank you so much. I think you guys have done such a phenomenal job with all the research and everything. Every time I come and sit there, it's like one new thing after another. And it's, it's great to see how fast you guys are working on the top line efficiently too.
So to be clear, the move from the nine to the two or three to the one is we're going to have a public hearing on Monday the ninth, at which point a similar presentation will be made. There'll be, there'll be additional presentations about how we, where we, how we got to where we are today. I'm not sure if anybody realizes it, but we started this process in two thousand fourteen. And we had the school committee hired, Dorian, we needed to do an evaluation of all of our existing elementary schools. This is why, before West Parish was completed. We then had hearings, public hearings in every elementary school to hear what people wanted. We then developed a plan on some of the recommendations. And the plan was to go from five elementary schools to three. That was voted in two thousand sixteen by this committee of every month, exactly, that's when it was Jackie. And that's, that's in the records. So that is the instructions, that this is the premise that we've been moving forward. And the reason that we need, the, many of the reasons about why we need to consolidate is, number one is we're gonna get kids into new schools sooner. Number two, we can provide more expansive services to all children sooner. And this, it's cost effective. People talk about spending money. As you saw just now, if we're going to build, if we're gonna renovate East Cluster School for thirty, what was it? Just, or building, make it, to make it equally educational criteria that we want. We don't see any sense, right? I'm not sure, I'm not speaking to the entire committee, but there, there, in the past, it's been that we want to build schools that meet our educational goals, not that meet the educational goals in nineteen forty-eight. So the cost of building a school on East Cluster site that would meet our education goals was fifty?
A new school?
New school. That was the one that met the education goals, right? It was fifty-one thousand. We'd have to do that at, to get what we're getting for the four-forty school, we'd have to do that at, at veterans also. That's a hundred and two million dollars.
So?
Sixty-five to sixty-nine. So I'm just, wanted to be clear that we, we have a job to do. And we, the building committee and the school committee is very much trying to be financially responsible to this community. We also want to build new schools, we need to build new schools. And we're trying to do it as effectively and efficiently as we can, so.
And I guess I just want to also say that both schools are undersized for what's, what we need. So even a new veteran's school would require more property than what the school footprint is currently on, as well as parking. So we're in a, there's many things to be considered in terms of, of the decision. That, you know, financial and what's the future, you know, what are future possibilities too for solutions.
Just a clarification, you mentioned on September the ninth that there would be a public hearing, but that is going to be sponsored by and conducted by the school building committee, not the Cluster School Committee.
And it'll be at Cairo's Auditorium, it'll start at six o'clock. And also, we are building a, a function on our website, which will allow people to ask questions and get a response published right on the website.
Imminent.
It's imminent, okay. That's what I heard yesterday too. By the end of the week, that will be up in mind.
A question about the public hearing, what, what information are you trying to draw? Like, what is the purpose of the public hearing?
The purpose of public hearing is to let people express what they, whatever their opinion is of what we should be doing with schools in Gloucester. I mean, basically, we have people speaking in oral communications here. We don't have oral communications at the building committee. We need to have a forum where people can, can, there will not be debate, they'll be able to make their statements. There'll be a presentation, people will make, will be able to make their statements. And we will take that under advisement before we make a decision to go from nine to two or three. This will all, that will all happen after the public hearing.
So I don't want to complicate anything by suggesting this, but I'm wondering, because I do, anyway, naturally. So when we have our meetings and, and there's any city function in, going on right now, we see the same message coming at us from some of the same people that are going to the meetings with a concern about green street and green space. I'm sure you've all experienced being in the public and hearing from other families that may not be here at our meetings, that have different opinions than what we're hearing while we're at our meetings. And I know some concerns I've heard is people who take a different view than what we're hearing at our meetings don't necessarily want to come to our meetings, they don't want the confrontation, but they do support the direction that we're going in. So I can't help but wonder, just to get a full opinion, doing something similar to what they did in Manchester, however, keeping it to the school family. In other words, we have a lot of emails of parents, is that what we?
What, what, similar to what they did?
So Manchester reached, I'm sorry, so Manchester reached out to the community to figure out what direction to go to, to build a school. They reached out to the community and got feedback, they did a survey. So I'm wondering if there's any way we can survey our families?
We can go back to two thousand fourteen, start all over.
But I mean, so two thousand fourteen is a little bit different than two thousand eighteen. You're talking to a different group of parents now. People in two thousand fourteen who had their kids in kindergarten and are now going to O'Malley and may not feel the same way as parents who now have young children knowing they're gonna be affected by the school. I'm just wondering if there's a way to do something other than a public hearing where we would get the same people to get a broader view of what the community wants, because it's, because I know just from my communication that it's not just what we hear here, here. So I know some people vote limited to what they hear at public hearings, and I just want to make sure that all opinions are heard somehow, or captured somewhere. Is there time to do that? I don't know, based on the time we'll see it tonight?
I don't know how to do it. I mean, if you can figure out the time.
Principals are definitely going to reach out to their school communities to encourage their attendance and their input. As well as? Public hearings at five o'clock? Six o'clock. And people can submit in writing as well, so that's gotta be very clear, that in writing is equally acceptable. And hopefully, we'll have them ready to the record for those that are not present. So we're trying to do as much outreach as possible to get people there that, as you say, aren't necessarily heard in this forum.
And I haven't, you know, we may have another public hearing when we go from the two or three to the one. I'm trying to do everything I can.
No, and I get that.
I just don't know how to, you know, to do what, what you're asking to do. And we can, we can make it as, as, we can publicize it as, as well as we can. So tell all your friends. So, thank you very much. And we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the back-to-school readiness report, the superintendent's report, which is basically the back-to-school readiness report. So, thank you very much. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By all accounts, we are ready and with one small drum roll, which I'll make a little later on, but we should be ready to go for the opening of school. Our teachers will be arriving on Tuesday for our open session. That will begin at eight o'clock. The freshmen prior to, they will be returning to the O'Malley Elementary School. So, we have our opening ceremonies followed by the marriage unions, teachers' union, education support professional meeting that morning. Teachers then go to their respective schools. Principals will be holding their meetings. The afternoon then is time for the teachers to put their finishing touches on preparing their moves and getting ready for the next day. Wednesday, September the third, is when our students will be coming in. Kindergartners will be doing half days on Wednesday and Thursday. No school for them on Friday, and then they will begin fully kindergarten on Monday. And our preschool children will be coming in on Monday, September ninth. We've sent out our letters of notification to both the district and the school level. The back-to-school open houses will be a series of Thursdays respectively, beginning on Thursday, September the fifth, with the O'Malley distribution of Chromebooks. Gloucester High School will have its open house on Thursday, September 12th. And then each of the different schools will have their back-to-school open houses up through Thursday, October the third. The chair mentioned the countdown to kindergarten last week. This has now been institutionalized. I think we've had it for three, possibly four years. And it's a really kind of wonderful opportunity for the parents in particular to come at their first-time entrance into the district with their young kindergartners, a chance to just sort of see those around them who are experiencing the same entry, if you will. It begins over the Cairo's Auditorium. We have teachers there, the principals, they get to meet and speak and greet. Then everybody sort of bustles over either to a school bus, so the kids can get on the school bus and see what that's all about. Or they can go over to the KBN Museum where there's a theatrical production where DW goes to kindergarten. The same troupe that will also come to each year as a wonderful production. I mentioned opening day for staff, along with our correspondences out to the families. We have notified about bus pass application forms, both in the letter and on the website. Free and reduced lunch, also the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. Parents can opt to minimize and restrict the kinds of student, personal student records that they would want distributed out to any public entity or private entity for that matter. So, we sent those letters out as well. We have just about completed our new hires. I don't know if there's anything outstanding at this point.
Have you hired a cat teacher?
Yes, we're in the process. There's a candidate. About thirty new hires for teachers, ten for education support professionals. And you have listings, I trust this was sent out to you, but I can mention that at the high school, two special education, foreign language, social studies, carpentry, computer assisted design. We have a new ROT instructor, the PACE instructor, that's the in-school suspension slash social emotional support program that's new and grant-funded, and three education support parent professionals. At O'Malley, we have a new guidance counselor, a grade eight math teacher, speech pathologist, English language learner teacher, the IT, information technology systems administrator, and three education support professionals. Ed Beaman, a psychologist, kindergarten teacher, grade one and grade three, and one educational support professional. Eddie Gloucester, a kindergarten teacher, grade one, grade four, and a music teacher who is shared with Plum Cove, and an art teacher who is shared with veterans from art. At Plum Cove, two grade one teachers and veterans. We had some late resignations in our English language learner teachers, three altogether, two of vets, one in O'Malley. All of those positions have since been filled. They did really good work on that. In addition to the English language learner, there's also grade three regular ed, grade three special education. As I mentioned, the two ELLs and two education support professionals, grade three, and a music teacher at West Parish, and in the preschool, a speech pathologist, a nurse, and one education support professional. So, a lot of work's been going on since last spring through the summer in order for us to fill each and all of these positions. Along with new hires, also comes the nature of the orientations and the academies. On Tuesday, August the 20th, we met with our new teachers through the new teacher orientation. Number one, right off the bat, they get their Chromebooks. There's a number of practical matters that are discussed as well. And there was also some conversation about one of our leading thoughts and explorations for this coming school year, which has to do with something called culturally responsive teaching in the brain and the relationship between culture, frame of reference, how students approach school, how they understand what they understand, and the fact that their cultural frame of reference is very much tied into where the brain works as well. Very interesting stuff. We've had a reading group, a study group working in this particular area, and we hope to establish and consider a amount of professional development in not only addressing the needs of each and every individual student, but also within the context of how they perceive and understand what it is that they're learning. In terms of student enrollment, our enrollment is just about the same as it was last year. Right now, the number is a little bit lower, about thirty or so students. Hope that, but that's because the preschool is in the process of doing the paperwork to get it into the system. And there are about thirty, thirty-five preschoolers to date that still are being entered into the system. So, we will be in and around the 2,895, 96 students for this coming school year. In terms of kindergarten, you have a chart that shows our total to date is around 213 students. We've also made our arrangements for the school choice for kindergarten, along with the, any school choice across the district. The kindergarten school choice requests are usually larger by proportion, so that takes just a little bit more work, but all of that stuff has been squared away. Building inspections. The fire inspector and the Department of Public Works have been through all the buildings. First, had two infections, and they have reported that schools are in fact ready for opening. There is one caveat, which I'll get to shortly. They all made another sweep just before school starts, checking some of the softer things, such as how much paper on the walls and the bulletin boards. Have all the cardboard boxes in the hallways been cleared so that everybody has neat, clean, and safe access into the buildings and the hallways once school begins. Summer facilities work, I was waiting for and continue to wait for a full report from the DPW. I guess they were not able to get it to me, but we'll have the Department, the director of DPW come and visit with BNF at our next meeting. Some of the things that we have discussed recently is the status of the O'Malley air conditioning. A lot of work has been done to the respective chillers and pumps, those are brand new. The duct work across the entire building, however, could be the next challenge over time. Right now, though, everything seems to be working and is intact. At East Gloucester, an AC unit has been installed for health reasons for one of our staff members, and that will be ready for the starting school. I received information today that a West Parish playground fence has been installed. We have a couple of children who will be entering West Parish who perhaps in around 20 years may become the Olympic team.
Yes.
Very good runners. Good for their athleticism, but bad for our safety and security. So, the fences, the fence itself has been constructed and is ready to go. The Gloucester High School library carpeting project is going to be completed over the Christmas vacation with all the work in preparation for getting the schools ready. They, they've not been able to put that on the list for the summer, but they may be able to do that over in December. This is going to be a tiling project, the word carpet tiles, which allows them to really edge and trim around stacks and get it done effectively, efficiently, and at minimum cost. The lift of the carpentry shop, this is an ADA compliance issue, and I believe that has been installed.
Not yet. It's again during the winter break, the schedule.
Good, good. The door locks at Veterans and East Gloucester, the most recent that are done, that means that all of the doors and locks, inner doors and locks, along with the outdoors at all of the elementary schools are now, have been changed and are intact. The high school locks need to be retrofitted, and they'll be moved to both the high school and the middle school as well. With the middle school, they can keep their door open, teachers can keep their doors open if they like. Should there have to be an emergency, they can simply close the door and lock the door from the inside. Not, it's not quite the same at the high school. And as a result, the work, our priority is that they move next to the high school and make sure those, those doors will lock quickly and effectively. Side door replacement at the high school, if you had a chance to drive over that, just completed a couple of days, it looks great. And my understanding is that they could lay concrete down at the O'Malley Middle School as well. Then we come to the Plum Cove abatement project. This is a project where tiles almost across the hallway and just, I think, every classroom are being replaced. What they discovered, they have taken up the tiles and the underlayment itself is not in good shape, plus the removal of the tiles is exceptionally difficult. In a word, the underlayment has been completed, the tile work, I believe, is going to be completed by tomorrow. And floors will be waxed, I think floors will be waxed tomorrow, and then Thursday, the furniture will be going in. That gives teachers Fridays, conceivably over late-day weekend, which would be problematic. Saturday or Sunday, if any of them choose. The principal, Tammy Borken, has asked if Plum Cove needs to, can they forego the opening Tuesday morning ceremonies? I think that if it's necessary for them to be, to do that, to be open for a school on Wednesday, they should do so. Tammy has also sent a letter out to the president of both the GTA and the education support professionals, asking if it's all right for their members to forego those meetings which take place after our opening conversation as well. And so, we're waiting for the response. I don't anticipate it being a problem, but if worse comes to worse and they have to start another city, that's what we'll do. Does not impact the district in terms of school days or anything along those lines. Safety meetings. We've had a number of safety meetings over the summer with police, fire, and the Department of Public Works, and the building inspector. We've sent the fire department our emergency management plans. They are under review. In terms of the summer meetings, quite a number of topics have been discussed, including just an overview and a review of those emergency management plans. Those were initially predicated on the National Incident Management System Guidelines, which is a national agency. Much of the response strategies taken by the fire department also come from NS as well, so there's a nice alignment going on there. The incident command structure, both interdepartmental and in district, we have pretty good sense and understanding of what we can expect in terms of who's in charge, when, and how information's going to be discussed, consolidated, and actions taken. We in fact had representatives from the police department and the fire department and Department of Public Works here for our retreat Thursday, late Thursday morning, in addition to a meet and greet, and these are the folks that are going to be responsible should an incident occur. It was also a good time to once again reinforce the way we're steadily coordinating and collaborating together in the case of a particular event. Over the summer, we spoke about central office, getting to the scene where necessary and helping to ensure that there's not only timely communication out to the public, but also between the incident commanders, depending upon the nature of the circumstance. If it's fires, the department. If it's a bomb threat, it's the police. But also getting that information out to the evacuation site. Our sense is that we want the principals going with students and staff to the evacuation site. For the middle and high school, of course, administrative remain behind. But we also want to ensure, particularly with respect to the elementaries, that that communication line is open and ongoing. We, we talked about evacuation procedures and when and where we need to call upon the police department to assist. If there's an evacuation to another school, for example, and it's also the same time when that school's arrival is taking place, parents, cars, buses, walkers, and all the rest, that's a situation where you're going to need some police coordination and the like. That's only one illustration, but we talked a lot about what the police can do for us. We also spoke about reunification procedures, and if there is an evacuation to the evacuation site, the lanes of the old community center or what have you, and then ultimately there's a decision that the students cannot go back to the school. In terms of logistics, the consensus across the board is that the reunification would take place at Gloucester High School, unless Gloucester High School's not available. And it gives us an opportunity to pick the children up and the staff, buses, get them to the field house, set up a meeting area for the parents, and create a reunification site, set up the necessary social, emotional, mental health kinds of situations that might be necessary both for students and for parents, should there be injuries. So, we've really worked extensively on looking at the very, very specific issues with respect to evacuation and reunification. And last, I think we've also talked about clearing and maintaining paths and pathways for evacuation. There are some halted thinking about where, for example, O'Malley should be going. Initially, the plan was to send it to Beaman. The consensus now is that we're going to get sent, sent over to the Department of Public Works. West Parish also needs a little work as well in that regard. As far as some of the areas, particularly in and around Beaman, there is some clearing and maintaining of paths that need to be done, and the Department of Public Works is going to be working on that as well.
Get clear in the path?
Sorry?
Get clear in the path in between O'Malley and Department of Public Works.
I don't know the specifics, but there are, for the immediate evacuation of the building, there are some areas that need to be cleaned up. In terms of dates for upcoming drills, each of the principals is going to be contacting Lieutenant Gosson to set up those dates. We'd like the first round for the school year to take place by November the first. We also anticipate that the elementaries will actually simulate an evacuation during those drills as well. And, and to the discussion, we can also add that there's a letter in this packet. Doren Whittier have been working on some plans to create secure double entry entrances at both the middle school and the high school. Those plans are in place, cost estimates, estimates exist. That information is, has been shared, the city is well aware of it, and what they are looking for is a letter from the school committee asking that they move forward on those particular representations and designs. And last, on a biannual basis, we are supposed to report that we have our sports concussion management policy and procedures in place, which we do, reviewed by our director of nurses and our athletic director each year. And so, last, September 30th, I need to send a letter to the Department of Education stating that those procedures are in place. Good to hear. So, I think we're ready.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Closed. It's unanimous. And we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. We have just building and finance, which met on August 21st last week.
Yes, we do. All right, well, Rich just went through the facilities, and we don't have to go through that again, we just sent a report. We have food service, presented this with some, a little bit of concerning. The student meals on the regular pay meals were down forty thousand dollars, so about fourteen percent. They were down from last year.
What are you going to buy down?
Down. Forty thousand dollars.
Sales are down?
Sales are down. The money coming in is down. Died forty thousand dollars, or about fourteen percent. It's interesting, though, that our funding, you know, they're only thirty-five percent of what we get for our paid meals. We get sixty-five percent of our money comes from the federal government on the free and reduced lunch. So, that's, so, in order to make up some ground here, we talked about, you know, finding out why kids are buying. You know, is it the quality of the meals? Is it the, you know, do now the nutritional requirements have tasteless meals? You know, what is going on? We've asked to have some of that information brought back to us, but there's only so much room to fill this buffer, because the federal government's only gave us, if we wanted to raise the price for our paid-for meals... if we wanted to raise the price for our paid for meals, it would only, you know, there's only thirty-five percent of the meals that we sell that we'd actually be able to impact. So that's a limited, uh, limited, it was, the, the, the federal money did go up seventy-two hundred, seventy-two hundred. So, you know, there's a little bit of that, but, uh, made up for that. And Alakark was up, uh, you know, about, um, ten, uh, goes up twelve hundred dollars out of twenty-two thousand. That's what we're looking at, trying to figure out how we can get, bridge that, close that gap on the paid for meals. That's, we did, but also we brought down, we reduced the wages by twenty-five thousand. And even though we went to their compostable, um, flatware or whatever, we brought down supplies by thirty-six thousand. So there's been some good efficiencies, you know, that's, uh, you know, sixty-one thousand dollars that, uh, you know, we brought down. So efficiencies really made up some of that difference, but still, we have a lot of aged equipment that still needs to be replaced. So we have, uh, so that's still, the food services are constant, uh, work in progress. Outstanding debt got brought down, uh, from fourteen thousand to sixty-four hundred over the last two months. So that was good. And the revolving accounts, um, were all in pretty good shape, except for transportation, correct?
Correct, you, that's a, the cash flow hasn't, uh...
We haven't, the tech, the, the bus pass, we just haven't been sold yet to fill that revolving account.
And the charters.
The student activity accounts that have been flagged for, um, in the audits, that we've been trying to work with the treasurer, uh, the treasurer's office and creating the bank accounts, because the city has to create those bank accounts. Um, we did, suppose that we're, we're going to have, um, checking account at the high school, it's for the student activities, the middle school for student activities, then one checking account for all of the elementaries that will be held at the main office. So people have to go through the P O process to use the student activities accounts. There right now is sixty-two thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars to populate these accounts, but they're not, it's not like the revolving account is, you know, we have to front it, it's in real good shape. Very minimal transfers, um, suffered sixty-eight hundred for repair and maintenance, and, uh, a special professional transfer for forty-five hundred. That was it for that. The legal fees, we, um, last year, I think, I think last year was a little bit an outlier for expenses. So last year, our fees were, um, regular fees for legal counsel was fifty-seven thousand dollars, and in this year's budget, we, we budgeted thirty thousand. But I think that may be able to be kept under control, and hopefully we won't have all the activity that we had last year with arbitration. But negotiations, hopefully we, we'll lose some of that cost.
I mean, you're looking at these for...
No, I'm not, no, I'm just saying that, with a lot of those negotiations, with a lot of...
Leavenses?
The grid level, right. Arbitrations, labor.
So you are taking the position that we're not going to have any leavenses?
No, no, I'm just hoping that we have...
I'm just wondering if you know something?
No, I, I don't. Special education came in at forty-two thousand dollars last year, we budgeted forty-one thousand, so that's, that's right there. But that, legal fees is something you're probably going to hear about next, you're going to see some transfers, um, if it, if it needs to be. We also had to, um, and you'll, well, it'll be a, uh, an action item where we have to pay two thousand twenty money with FY nineteen, pay FY nineteen bill with, with FY twenty money, and it's, uh, forty-eight hundred and sixty dollars, but we'll get that in a minute. And that was it?
Yes.
Beautiful question.
Um, back to the school lunch, um, you said there's still sixty-four hundred, um, outstanding. Does that mean we have kids coming back to school and not going to be able to get lunch because their debt is there? Was that discussed at all?
No, I don't think we've ever refused lunch.
No.
So now refusing lunch?
No.
No, we just chase them for the money.
Yeah, we've, we've never, uh, sure the way it's... Because of, uh, debt.
Thank you.
Um, and we budgeted, um, the job description hasn't been, uh, that it...
We need to meet with the personnel committee to...
For a person to, uh, have a stipend position to chase this down.
The job description.
We, it's in our budget, we voted it into the budget, so, um...
Just need a job description.
Job description, job description to be vetted through personnel, so you got administration has to come up with a job description that puts under personnel. Um, and that was it, any other questions?
Okay, moving on to action. We have a number of grants. The first one is a Gloucester Education Grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the first installment payment of a three-year pledge of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Mr. Wong of the Lions Wong Auto Group for the Gloucester High School Automotive Technology Program.
So, second?
It's, I assume we'll send out an appropriate thank you.
Oh, yes.
Can we add in the thank you that we're appreciative that he's hiring students out of our automotive shop while he's donating to our schools, which is a double win for us.
Yeah. So you see, we'll let it to the school.
So, uh, double win, or double.
Double win, that is awesome.
Any, uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Um, we have four, um, um, DESI grants, um, you want to vote, can we vote as all at once?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the first one is a Title I grant in the amount of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. The second is a ti- um, Title II A grant in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and thirteen, thirteen dollars. Uh, the third is a Title III grant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seventy-one dollars. And the fourth is a Title IV grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars.
I move that we accept the grant as stated.
Second?
Okay, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Um, the, this was brought up by, um, Chairman Gross about, um, paying, um, back wages from last year, and, um, we need to pay off a teacher who did additional work. Um, we had a teacher out, uh, at the high school in the robotics program who was, um, had, uh, for medical reasons, and we got a substitute, uh, teacher that was not quite, um, as, um, conversing in, in robotics as, as, um, one of our other teachers. So he came in and helped him for an hour a day, and somehow that didn't get paid last year. We need to pay him, uh, this was the agreed upon amount. So it's basically, um, thirty dollars a day for, um, a hundred, a hundred and sixty...
Thirty dollars an hour?
Thirty dollars an hour, but it was an hour a day for, for a hundred and...
Hundred eighty.
Hundred, a hundred and eighty?
I'm not sure.
I thought it was, it was, it was the last term, not before the year, we didn't start until later. But, um, so that's what this is, but we have to go to, uh, the city council to approve, um, paying this as we do every time. So they have a motion to authorize the CFO to, uh, appeal to the, uh, city council to allow us to pay this bill.
So, second?
Any, uh...
It's a hundred and sixty-two days.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought of. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, uh, I don't think we need to, um, bring up Messeer's School Building Authority Project update anymore.
We're covered, I don't...
What?
The movie.
Oh, oh, I don't have, I got the wrong agenda.
So, good bye.
Okay, um, there's, um, as you remember, um, at our last meeting, we got a request, um, from the people making the movie to, uh, use the name Gloucester High School along with its associated, um, logos in their movie. Uh, we had scheduled, uh, there were a number of questions that people wanted to answer, one of which was do we actually own that, um, uh, information, that title? And in terms of the legal opinions, that we don't. So, um, rather than bring it back, um, uh, to discuss, uh, my suggestion, my thought is that we would just acknowledge that we don't, that they can use it, that we don't have any rights to it, and therefore we're not endorsing the movie or, or, or getting it, or, you know, because we don't know, you know, if they say something bad about Gloucester in the movie, then, you know, we don't want to have our thumbprint on it. So there's a letter in the, um, in the packet, um, which we drafted based on the, uh, legal opinion that we received from the city solicitor, and we're just going, I, I'm suggesting that we just approve to send that on to outside, and send it on to the movie company.
My motion? Uh, I move that we, um, approve the letter to go to producer, but...
Is there any discussion?
It was quite entertaining reading.
Really was.
I'll watch it.
I'll watch it, yeah, it sounds interesting. And, uh, they have been here, I mean, they're unlike the Adam Sandler thing that we're in today or two. They've been, they've been, they're filming a lot in Gloucester. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, I would sign that letter and send it. Um, also, um, so we don't need to go MSBA unless somebody has a further, uh, preschool location. As of, um, this moment, I don't think there's any, any movement, um, although we do have a commitment, um, from the, uh, uh, administration that they're going to move forward with, um, the purchase of this property. That's what they're going to try, see if they can make the help.
So, they require, we the committee, we get our reports from, uh, the various schools, we can talk what's, what's going on, but we keep hearing from the staff, this preschool does matter for the children that are here. Do we have to approve the educational settlement? Should we do it before they go too far? If this, if the city administration's saying, oh, you know, they want this building, so we're in a hurry to start buying this, and then we can say, well, actually, hold up, we're hearing that it's gotten too small over here, so we're going to either, A, find somewhere for the admin to go, so we can take admin space and make it preschool, or B, we don't want, you know, we won't approve this, you know, we don't, or if we say, yeah, this is great, thank you, it's after they decide before they go too far, or at least before they abandon looking at other alternatives, right? Thinking this is what we want, whereas staff suggesting they have to be...
I, I think the first step is that, I think we do have some information that's been compiled by the, by the staff here about what the needs are, and if we can make that available for a next meeting.
I think it's to be...
We've been working, I'm sorry?
The mayor was going to be...
We've been working with, with, uh, coming back, uh, Jason Doom, uh, we can certainly...
But I'm just saying, it's going further, the grid board has, has been developed further.
But shouldn't we be receiving a report from the superintendent if there's issues here with space to begin with? This has been hearing from staff, I mean...
That's tight.
Will the staff come and talk to us in these meetings, though?
We, we've, they've, we've had to expand, I mean, you know, IT is now not here anymore. They're not at the high school. They're, they're, they've expanded, you know, since they've come here, so it's been, it's been...
So as it stands right now, are we saying there's an issue with space?
I, there is an issue with space, and, and I think the end result is the administration will be moving out of here. That's, I, I, you know, but as far as, because it's, it is...
High school.
I, I, I don't mean to downplay the role of the administration, but we can put them anywhere. Whereas the preschool, preschool we cannot, the preschool has, has to have classrooms. There are laws that the preschool is a priority, the administration is...
So that would mean that this building is capable of being purchased for a purpose, we just have to make adjustments with who's here. So that's different than saying we don't want it because what we have isn't working. Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that needs to be regulated.
Right, yeah.
There's enough capacity here, it's, it's, it's just not for the administration to... So I think that's the issue, is where do we, where do we, you know, what cave do we find?
Sure, horse for the, you know, a car for the horse type stuff, we should, say a vote and announce to the, you know, the following conditions, we improve educationally.
Well, we should, we, we've done it before, but we should make a request to the administration that they, that, uh, they, um, proceed with negotiations, purchase this building, and also proceed, um, with examining, um, opportunities to move the administration.
So when will we do that?
We can do that at our next meeting.
Yes, let's get going, just deal with everything for a minute.
All right.
Everything else.
All right. So at our last meeting, um, uh, we were instructed, we voted to send a meta, a letter to the mayor to, um, support the, um, work being done for the, um, safety renovations at, at, uh, the high school and O'Malley School. And I've included that letter just so you can see it, but we already voted to, to send that out. If, is there something else? I think a lot of the...
This is a new business.
She was the same form really.
Okay, is there something Melissa wanted to bring up about the vaping?
Yes, I sent you all an email earlier just to, you know, heads up that I was going to bring this forward. Um, on the news, and this conversation nationally, both locally nationally, about how schools are installing vapor, vaping detectors in bathrooms. Um, we all know it's an epidemic, um, and many schools are finding it to be successful. So many of those schools that are finding it to be successful are not far from this school. So in my email, I was, um, going to suggest that we send it for, to the building and finance committee for discussion and consideration, but now I'm wondering if we should maybe invite a school that's doing this, like Georgetown, who's in the process of purchasing more, after they've already used them for a certain amount of time, um, to come in and talk to us, to let us know how they work, if they work, before we determine whether we should or not.
Why don't we refer to be an F and let them figure out how to best present it to the committee?
You got a letter in the next week, another day, boss?
What are we doing?
Referring it to the...
It's going to be taken up next week, not the...
It is, you're not waiting till January?
To formulate a, to formulate a long range...
Paris, well, there's a lot of interest in this topic, and Paris is looking at, so...
I, I agree.
I think we should consider...
Is there anything else anybody would like to chat around about before we go?
No. Want to talk, Sharon?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you very much.